Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have a presentation that's going to be made by the Canadian Volunteer Fire Service. And Mark Pam from, where is it? Kentville, Kettville Fire Department, going to present the awards tonight.
It's truly an honor to stand here before you today on behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association to present one of the most prestigious recognitions of our organization, the Lifetime Achievement Award. This year, we are proud to celebrate an exceptional individual whose dedication, service, and leadership have left an indelible mark on the volunteer fire service community. Please join me in congratulating the 2024 recipient, Reed Wynott, of the Bridgewater Fire Department. Reed's career in the fire service is nothing short of extraordinary. With 50 years of service, his unwavering commitment to protecting his community and mentoring the next generation of firefighters embodies the very spirit of volunteerism. Reed has not only responded to countless emergencies, but has also been instrumental in shaping the culture of safety, camaraderie, and excellence within the Bridgewater Fire Department. Throughout his tenure, Reed has demonstrated a passion for sharing his knowledge and expertise. From training new recruits to enhancing operational protocols, he's ensured that the legacy of the Bridgewater Fire Department is one of resilience and readiness. His mentorship has inspired many to follow in his footsteps, fostering a stronger, more connected fire service community. Reed's contributions extend beyond his department. His leadership and advocacy for volunteer fire services have made a lasting impact on our collective mission to safeguard communities across Canada. He exemplifies what it means to serve selflessly, and his dedication reminds us all why we choose this path. We would like to express our sincere gratitude to Makita for their support of this award. As a valued partner, Makita's commitment to recognizing the outstanding contributions of individuals like Reed is a testament to their belief in the power of community and volunteerism. Their sponsorship ensures that we can continue to honor those who have given so much to protect and serve. All the tools on the table are donations from Makita to the recipient's department. Reed, as you accept this Lifetime Achievement Award, know that your impact reaches far beyond the walls of your firewall. Your leadership, dedication, and compassion have touched countless lives, and your legacy will inspire future generations of volunteer firefighters. This is the first year that we'll be giving a large coin for Reed to keep, and it's got his name engraved on it with the year, as well as now, this is one of only 15 coins like this, a keeper coin or pocket coin, that he can have as well. On behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association, the Bridgewater Fire Department, and the many communities you have served, thank you for extraordinary service. Congratulations, Reed, on this well-deserved recognition. Please join me in a round of applause as we celebrate the remarkable achievements of Reed Wynott.
Welcome to our official stamp cancellation for the town of Bridgewater. Glad to see everybody's here.
First of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out to this on our birthday, 125 years. It's something quite special for the town. And I want to thank the Social Stamp Club for this stamp cancellation, right? It's a pictorial stamp cancellation. I have in my pocket the last one that I keep in my office at Town Hall from 2017, where we had the one for Bitchanewiska Park, which also has the nice stamp on it for the park. So I have a couple of these that are on display, so whenever I'm meeting with developers or business people interested in coming to our town to start a new business, this is one of the things they see. And so, to mark our 125th birthday with another, I find these, obviously they're unique, but they're also very special, I think it's very, so thank you all for putting this together and for being here today.
Anyways, thank you, everybody, for coming for Bridgewater 125. And the Philatelic Society has asked us to produce a cancellation commemorating this event, so which we have done, and it's turned out with very positive reviews. And Canada Post is really pleased to be involved with supporting Philatelic Society and Bridgewater. So, of course, it's just been a great time. So the council is officially released as of right now, and please take part in some of the festivities. We have coffee, tea, donuts, anything you folks like. Thank you very much.
Thanks for all that from the, thanks folks.
We'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. So, obviously, Mayor Mitchell, oh, sorry, I should start with the land acknowledgement. So, I'd like to acknowledge that we are, the town of Bridgewater is located in McMoggy, the ancestral and unceded territory of the McMog people, and we are very privileged to be here. Mayor Mitchell isn't with us this evening, obviously. He's away at meetings at the International Network of Michelin Cities, representing the town of Bridgewater, maybe by this point enjoying a little bit of downtime. I'm pleased to fill in while he's away. So, we'll get right to the agenda. Any additions or deletions?
Counselor Wynott.
Counselor Wynott, you said you had a few, like 10.
Oh, just trying to get in your head.
Okay, hearing none. A motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Newell, seconded by Counselor Wynott, thank you. And then we're down to announcements. Are there any announcements to share? Okay, then moving on to our proclamation. So Access Awareness Week is from May 25th to the 31st, and the proclamation will be shared on our social media as usual. And we move along to delegations. So we have a delegation, Bridgewater Farmers Market regarding the food truck party, and I think I see, I think I saw Rita and Jude here. Are you guys ready? All right. If you'll just come, come to the microphone and introduce yourselves, please.
Hi, I'm Jude Meyer. I'm the vice president of the farmers market, and this is Rita, she's our treasurer. Yeah, so we have our, you're all aware of the farmers market and everything, and every year we do a food truck party to help support and raise money for the nurturing communities program, which is a program that provides money to the community. We give some into it, and they give money to people who then spend it at the local farmers market and help some changey things. So, we have a financial responsibility to raise money for them. The food truck party is part of how we do that. Last year, you were gracious enough to waive the truck vendor, like the fees, and provide porta potties and block off and have staff to block the street, and we are simply asking if you would duplicate what you did last year again, so we can continue to support this program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So do we have to direct that back to another meeting?
Well, given that the event is on May 18th.
It's Saturday, yeah. We're usually quicker, like ahead of time of this, but we're, it's been a scramble this year.
So I would say that if council's interested in entertaining the in-kind support, that we would pass a motion tonight, and so there is a motion there for your consideration. And the in-kind support amount, based on previous years, is approximately $2,000.
Is there any questions first? Okay, Counselor Newell, you wanted to make the motion?
I do this because my mother has already told me that she is very excited for this, so I think I have to do this. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the in-kind support of approximately $2,000 for the 2025 food truck party hosted by the Bridgewater Farmers Market Association, as per document 25-086.
And a secondar, Counselor Fager, thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for feeding us.
We're not taking up a lot of your time, but I appreciate that.
Good night.
And we'll see you all at the market.
Yes, we'll see you there. Okay, then we're, there's no public hearings, we're down to minutes. So the minutes, we have like the second half of April, the minutes for a couple of public hearings and a couple of regular council meetings. Any corrections, anything, anyone picked up in those? They always look perfect. So a motion to approve the minutes. Counselor Fager?
Yes, move that, move that the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the following minutes, April 14th, 2025, regular council, April 14th, 2025, public hearing for 440 King Street Development Agreement, and the April 14th, 2025, public hearing for flood risk and LRDAA policy, and the April 14th, 2025, public hearing for land use bylaw amendments 5.11c, and the April 28th, 2025, regular council as amended or circulated.
Circulated, okay. And a secondar, Counselor Wynott, thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. And down to correspondence for information. So we have a letter from the Department of Municipal Affairs from the municipality of Colchester regarding wind turbine setbacks, and that's just for information.
Yeah, unless council wished to send a letter of support for their letter, and they're essentially raising concern over the setbacks that were established by the province or the restriction on the setbacks that municipalities could set through their own land use bylaw.
Is there any wish to send a letter of support, or just accept it as information? Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know if we can really show support or not. I mean, I, I'm fairly uneducated on setback requirements for wind turbines, but I guess it'd be something that if was recommended by our engineering department, if we were to ever explore wind turbines and setback requirements, then certainly I would be in support if this was something that we would be experiencing as well. So, right now, I guess, I don't know. I've read the correspondence, I guess.
Okay. And we don't need a motion for that, right?
No, you can just receive it for information at this point.
Okay, and then down to correspondence for action. 8.1, SoShore Public Libraries Request for mayoral support on library funding. And we have, you can come on up and introduce yourself.
Hi, I was here a few months ago, you may remember me, Ashley Nunsmith, CEO and chief librarian for SoShore Public Libraries. I circulated the letter and a memo, I don't really have much to add, but I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, any questions? So, and just to kind of give a recap of the request is to support, a letter of support, requesting the mayor's signature on the letter, requesting that a, the province's funding, which has been stagnant for how mu, since what year?
Quite a while, there was a bit of a bump five years ago in 2021, but before that, it was more or less stable for 17 years.
Right, yeah, so with no change, one change in 17 years. They're looking for some increases to help cover the increase in costs of operations, and looking for our support on that letter. Are there any questions, any discussion? Counselor Newell?
Are you going to tell me what, like, what goes into the funding formula now to get your current funding results, and I guess, is there, what are your desires of how the province could change that?
Yeah, absolutely. The current funding formula is 70% provincial, 27% municipal, and at least 3% self-generated by the board through donations, fundraising. We generate actually closer to 11% here on the SoShore, so we're pretty maxed out in terms of capacity there. We apply for any grants we can think would fit our mission. What goes into the funding formula is largely population-based, so there's per capita in terms of staffing, collections, and technology. Those are kind of the three big buckets, so to speak, of a library's funding, with staff being by, in a way, the largest, about 70% of our expenditures. And there are a few kind of core, so, because some regions are so much smaller than others, if you did population only, so that was one of the big changes in 2021, they kind of said, okay, you have a core six full-time staff that you can hire, and how much that is equal to our wages, as you saw in my presentation, are considerably lower than people doing similar work in, say, municipalities, or the province. And so what we're just asking for is to help us stay on top of that cost of living, it's very hard to recruit and retain qualified staff. Our staff are information professionals, of course, they're helping anybody who comes in with all kinds of different questions. And so we have fallen behind over those 21 years or so without very, just one or two small increases, and so I don't have a dollar figure of what went forward to the government. There was a funding review committee that met last spring and summer, their recommendations went forward to the government, then there was a provincial election called, so they were in caretaker mode. We have a new minister, Dave Ritzy, he has been breached, or briefed on the, on the recommendation, but as far as we know, it's still just sitting with the CCTH department and hasn't been forwarded to the Treasury Board yet. So there's an immediate $1.6 million request that myself and my counterparts have made, we haven't heard anything back on that one, and as well, just the funding formula itself.
Any other questions? Very valuable resource in the community, not just books and learning, but it connects people, and the programming is so valuable, so, do we have a motion to support the letter? Counselor Wynott?
Yeah, sorry, it's not the Counselor Newell, too.
I won't, I won't, I'm rushing over.
I have a gavel.
I'll take that, actually.
I move that the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the request from the SoShore Public Libraries and authorize the mayor to affix his signature on a joint municipal letter to the Minister of Communities, Culture, Tourism, and Heritage, urging the province to reexamine the current public library funding formula.
Thank you. And a secondar, Counselor Newell? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
We'll keep our fingers crossed for you. And then we're down to 9.1, under Staff Reports and Recommendations, is the Fourth Quarter CAO Strategic Priorities Report and Update.
So this is the fourth quarter, as was mentioned, of the fiscal year 2024-25, and it reports on council's strategic priorities. I've also incorporated into this the priorities that were set in January, February, and we have the quarterly reports that are accompanying the strategic priorities update, and if you have any questions about those, you can certainly ask as well, but my comments will be focused on the strategic priorities. So, in the last quarter of the previous fiscal year, we saw Exit 12A, the site plan Phase One, was noted at 75%, but we brought it to council since then to show council and get direction from council with respects to the direction for how Exit 12A for Phase One was to be developed, and some direction's been given to staff to look at our planning documents to make sure that they align with that new concept. The marketing levy was put into place April 1, the bylaw was completed, the engagement with the platforms, and as well as the, the operators was completed, and what's outstanding is a report to council with the options for how to use the revenue. So we are collecting the revenue, and it's going into a reserve until that decision's made. Wastewater capacity strategy, there is primarily work focused on the modeling and the condition assessment, so we'll be getting a report on that at the discussion session next week. We went through our strategic priority workshop setting exercise with council, developed the priorities and the work plan, and aligned that with our budget. Regional growth management was a new priority of council to look at that, and during the last quarter, direction was given to, to get, have conversations with our neighboring municipality, the District of Lunenburg, and look at how we could explore that, and we've done that, and council's since given direction to prepare Terms of Reference, which is on your agenda tonight. Transportation Master Plan presentation was worked on, and we approved the updates to the accessibility plan and the EDI plan. Draft was presented for approval, too, so those were completed. Energize Bridgewater's on the agenda tonight, but there was some, some direction with respects to what's next for Energize Bridgewater, and so we have a report tonight on that. During the last quarter, we completed the Clean Fuel Feasibility Report, an opportunity assessment, brought that to council. Development charges, there wasn't a lot of work done on development charges during our last quarter, we primarily focused on the background, so the flow modeling, which you'll receive a report on as indicated next week. Housing Action Plan, and our requests for decision came to council outlining the initiatives under that plan, we got $3.2 million, and what initiatives we were going to do to implement our housing action plan was done. HR, the remuneration review was completed and implemented, and pension transition has been completed as well. Then the downtown growth plan, while council started conversations on the retail and accommodations gap analysis earlier in the fiscal year, we received in the last quarter the final report, and that was presented at a discussion session as well as council. And that was primarily it for the major initiatives that we had worked on during the last quarter. There is also a revised strategic priorities chart that's attached to show the updates. So we, you can see in blue, marketing levy comes out, accessibility plan, EDI plan comes out, and the transportation master plan came out, because that was, the direction was to make that presentation to council, and we've done that. Energize Bridgewater, you'll see that that's been proposed to be brought up to the now for what's next. So you received your presentation, but there's still some work to do there, and it's being suggested that that become a top priority, and then, so that's why you see it crossed out in the, in the next column. We took out flood risk mitigation, that was completed, we finalized the MPS and land use bylaw amendments on that, so that was removed as well. And I believe that is the primary differences, so if council's in agreement with that, then the motion would be in order to approve those changes.
Are there any questions? Counselor?
And I'm sorry if I missed this, but the options for revenue for the marketing levy, when could we plan on discussing that?
So that one, we have it, that is late, so I believe we had, it's in the second quarter, I believe, is where she's targeting to bring that forward.
Okay.
So that should be somewhere in the summer, September, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
And as indicated, until then, the funds aren't going to be allocated to anything, just placed in reserve, and when we're ready to plan for them, there may be an opportunity to use those funds this year, or be put into next year's budget as revenue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the updated report? Counselor Conklin?
I'll make that motion, Deputy Mayor. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater receive the CAO Strategic Priorities Update and accompanying fourth quarter reports, and approve the revisions to the strategic priorities chart as presented in document number 25-081.
And a secondar, Counselor Fager? And all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And we're down to business arising and unfinished business. 10.1 is Energize Bridgewater, we're looking at options for moving forward as the, the end of the
just placed in reserve. And when we're ready to plan for them, there may be an opportunity to use those funds this year, or be put into next year's budget as revenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the updated report? Councilor Conklin?
I'll make that motion, Deputy Mayor. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater receive the CAO Strategic Priorities Update and accompanying Fourth Quarter Reports and approve the revisions to the Strategic Priorities Chart as presented in Document Number 25-081.
And a second, there, Councilor Fager. And all those in favor, any opposed? Motion is carried. And we're down to Business arising and unfinished business. 10.1 is Energized Bridgewater. We're looking at options for moving forward as the end of the Smart Cities contract ends. And we've got a presentation, I think.
Does this work? Doesn't seem to be responding. There's also no light. Seems to be dead. I can say next slide?
Sure.
Good evening. Deputy Mayor, members of council, my name's Leon DeVried, and my colleague, Assad Hussain, are here from the Energized Bridgewater program to follow up on our discussion session from last week. If you'll permit us, we'll run briefly through the presentation we gave last week to make it a public document. So, yeah, it's not responding. Okay, we're scrolling. Awesome. So, as you're aware, the Energized Bridgewater program is set to wind up and complete all of its funded objectives this current fiscal year. It is year six of six. It's hard to believe that it's been on the go for that long, but it has been a long and very interesting and eventful journey over the past years, and we have successfully arrived at a place where we have three program services that are summarized on this chart here in front of you, where what the whole point of the program is, is to assist Bridgewater residents in reducing their risk of energy poverty and in helping people get out of energy poverty, if that's the situation they find themselves in. And that comes from a history of council decisions and priorities around energy and housing and community services. So just very briefly, on the top left-hand side, the Energized Bridgewater Home Upgrades Program is the public brand name of a set of services that are all connected, where the town of Bridgewater works very closely with Efficiency Nova Scotia to deliver upgrades to Bridgewater residents. We play an important role in that, in navigating residents and property owners to the available services. There's a single-unit stream and a multi-unit stream as well for apartment buildings and rental housing. On the top right-hand corner, we work very closely with, and in fact, the town helped to initiate a community service organization called the South Shore Open Doors Association, which provides coordinated access services, which connects our residents to housing and housing support services if they're experiencing homelessness, housing insecurity, and energy poverty. That service was, has been up and running since 2022. So it is quite a, it has received a lot of uptake from the community and continues to operate today, and the town continues to fund it through the Energized Bridgewater budget, which we have been doing for the past few years. And finally, in the bottom right-hand corner, being a smart communities initiative, Energized Bridgewater has developed its own community energy dashboard that residents can access, called Bridgewise, that provides them with high-quality information on their home energy use, their indoor air quality, and opportunities to reduce energy spending. So these three components are now the implemented solution that we worked at to develop and then implement and pilot over several years. And it's, of course, all connected to the Smart Cities Challenge, which is the main funder for the program. Very, very little of the program is funded out of the municipal tax base. That mainly comes down to some in-kind support that the town provides. Next slide, please. One of the pieces that has become clarified over the course of deployment of the program is that we do, we have actually ended up at two complementary services. So the South Shore Open Doors Association's Coordinated Access Service primarily serves residents who are in the rental housing situation or who are unhoused versus the Energized Bridgewater Home Upgrades Program and the Bridgewise Program, which are primarily serving property owners and homeowners. There is a bit of overlap between those two services, but it's just important to recognize that as a housing service, the retrofit program can only do so much for people who are unhoused or people who are renters, because at the end of the day, it's landlords who really make decisions about housing. And while we provide a rental housing stream within the Home Upgrades Program, there's only so much we can do to really ensure that energy costs and energy poverty rates decrease as a result of that. So South Shore Open Doors Association providing those services for people experiencing lower housing and energy security. Next slide, please. In January, we came to you and indicated that there are some potential futures should council decide to want for the program, the piloted programs to continue past March 2026. We suggested that there may be a low-effort way to continue some of the programming, an approach that involves regionalization, which means that a regional partner or group of regional partners basically take over the programming and assist in providing it or supporting it, and then a recapitalization model, which is just far too fancy a word to say, renewed funding for the program while maintaining in the town's kind of control. We did investigate through the report before you, the commercialization option, but found that none of the program components are ready for commercialization at this point, although the Bridgewise technology may have potential for commercialization after another one to two years of program, sorry, technology improvement and implementation in order to demonstrate that it really works and that it can collect multiple years of data, including baseline data, which will be important for that work. So the default pathway, of course, is completion of the program and the finalization of these pilot initiatives this fiscal year. However, should council direct staff to do so, staff can continue to explore a number of options based on council's direction. Next slide, please. This table is explained in much greater detail in the appendix of the report, but essentially what we did is we took a high-level view of the low-effort regionalization, recapitalization, and commercialization opportunities within each of the program streams. We commented on those in the report, and what we would offer is that Town Council can direct staff at this point to continue our exploration into all of the possible opportunities here and bring you back a costed plan, more information on how that would work so that you can make a decision on those opportunities, or to pursue a subset of these opportunities, should council not wish for us to invest time and communications with partners and so on to try to extend all of the options. So if we can go on to the last slide, please. The request for decision tonight is to either continue exploring and bring you back kind of a set of opportunities related to all of the options, or for you to direct us to pursue a subset of available options based on that list, or to direct us to cease pursuing opportunities for program extension past March 2026, and simply continue to focus on program completion. The exploration would be compatible with our current work plans and would be able to fit in for the next few months. We would anticipate bringing you information to make decisions on by no later than September, because any such decision to extend really needs at minimum a six-month lead-up so that those arrangements can be made in the second half of the fiscal year. So there's a little timeline on the last page of the report with more information on timing considerations. Dr. Hussain and I are available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? We had a big discussion on it at the discussion session last Monday, and the, those aren't live streamed, but the minutes will be on the website if the public is interested in that conversation. I have a question. I just want to make sure that I understand regionalization and recapitalization. So regionalization would be partnerships with us still in the mix, and recapitalization would basically be somebody else takes it on, they're funding it, they're running, they're operating it?
I can respond to that. So in our lingo in the report, it may not be the best language, but the way we thought about it is that in regionalization, the town really says, this shouldn't just be a town service. This should be a service that really serves a much broader region. And because of that, the town wouldn't be in a, really like a directing role anymore. It would be where the service, the innovations, the system behind it really kind of gets transferred to another holding body, essentially. Now, obviously, that holding body would somehow pay for it, right? So the idea wouldn't be that someone else takes it on a town and continues to pay for it. That doesn't make sense. So somehow, the assumption is that with regionalization, there would be other resources that come together, and a regional partner may be, for example, a utility. It might be a provincial agency. It might actually be a group of municipalities. So basically, the idea is that the town lets go of the service to some extent while still wanting the service to be delivered to its residents, but as part of a larger system. Whereas recapitalization is really to repeat the pilot arrangement that we've had, where we've basically gone and funded the majority of the work ourselves, because we sought external funding to just continue owning and running the services. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
And another just clarification. So there was coordinated access, which didn't bring people through the doors the way that we expected, probably because they ended up dealing with a much more emergent need. So people who were unhoused became kind of their primary focus, because that's much more of an emergency than energy poverty. So that didn't bring people through the door the way that we expected it to, but then we had a navigator as well, who was meeting with people one-on-one. Can you explain the difference between the coordinated access and a navigator?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
So, and these services are complex, so it's very understandable that it's not always clear who does what. Also, this is really moving into kind of community service provision and social service provision, which is not our usual frame of reference, right, for a municipality. So probably a way that we can explain it is that coordinated access is the process of individuals being assessed for their, kind of their global needs. So what does a household or an individual really need? Are they unsafe? Do they not have a place to sleep? Do they need protective services? Are they having legal issues as well that need support? And so what coordinated access does is it really tries to connect people most as efficiently as possible to a broad range of community support services. But all of that really focuses on housing as well, because one of the fundamental underlying principles of that service provision is if people don't have a place to lay their head, it's very hard to provide them with the supports, the other supports that they need. And if they're not safe, from a housing perspective, it's, a lot of other things are unsafe. So coordinated access is really a collection of community services that support a household or family or individual kind of globally. What our navigation service does is it helps people move through our retrofit program. So it's really very distinct from coordinated access. The navigator assists individuals with finding the correct information about what opportunities are available for them in their home. They, we connect them to all available grants and financing opportunities. We help them with application form intake. So if you go back, Patrick, could you go back to the slide that has the spectrum on it, please? One more, please. Sorry, one more. Thank you. So one way to think about it is the navigator helps people through the right side of this diagram. So the Home Upgrades Program and Bridgewise, because those are our services for properties, property owners, homeowners. The services on the left-hand side of the diagram are provided by a household navigator, which is a position, it's a type of role that SOTA has on its staff. And actually, a variety of staff provide a set of services that all can be together looked at and called coordinated access. Yeah. When we first designed the program, we were hoping that coordinated access would also guide people through the retrofit program. But what ended up happening was that never happened. We weren't able to implement the program in that way. It didn't make sense. And so what we did is as coordinated access really started focusing on the unhoused and housing insecure residents and providing those wraparound services, the navigator was a role we created that really guided people through our program, made sure they didn't fall out of the program if that could be prevented somehow, because somebody might be experiencing challenges or more acute needs. I will say that the Energized Navigator works very closely with the household navigators and the SOTA services, because people are always in need of being connected to community services. So we do, there is a lot of information exchange that happens there. Yeah.
Perfect. Any other questions?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, I just had a question for Leon with regards to, I guess, when you, I guess it's dependent on the outcome of the motion this evening. However, when we're looking at recapitalization and regionalization, will, when you come back with a report in September, will you be giving detailed options, say, for example, when you mention about regionalization, that it could be, say, a utility partnered with other municipalities? I'm just wondering, will there be options within that, that category, say, and how many? Do you, I know it's all driven with staff time, and are you going to be coming back with the most feasible option, I guess? Are there going to be options within that, or is just your staff is going to be recommending? Or have you really got to that point where, what that looks like when you come back to us in September? Just kind of curious.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, and I'll invite the deputy CAO or CAO to weigh in as well. From my perspective, what we would do is over the next few months, we would identify what the options are with, like, there might be multiple options for one pathway.
Right.
We would assess what is possible. We would try to ensure that there's actually reciprocation on the other end. So for example, would a partner in a regionalization scenario be willing to sign a contract, say? Would they be willing to work with us to prepare that arrangement? Are they willing to put things in writing, right? Can we work out the details as much as possible? I think what, I think, you know, unless we are directed to bring you one solution only, I think what makes sense is to simply report to you what we found. So we found that there's one option here, which is looking very strong, because we have a partner that's willing to do X, Y, Z, and they've already committed to this and that on paper. That's looking very strong. There might be another option over here, but that one is looking weak right now, because we don't have commitments. However, if council would really like us to pursue that and take another month or two, maybe that's possible. So I think what, in my mind, we will explore the various options that are available, but give you an assessment as well of what's feasible.
Right.
By that point, because it will be very important to make a decision on these matters in a timely way. Dragging out that decision timeframe, I mean, we can spell out to you what the risk would be of not making a decision, but the intent is to do that as quickly as possible in the fiscal year.
Right.
But you also need information. So it's going to be a balancing act of the two.
Yeah, so you'll make, based on what you have up to that point, and yeah.
Yes.
Based on the success or probability of this outcome, we'll be recommending.
Okay. Any others? On the actual technology piece, how many homes do we have the Bridgewise monitor in at the moment?
Yeah, we have about 13 homes now, yeah. And during the summer time, we are planning to scale up the deployment of these sensors in more homes.
Okay, so you're getting data now?
Yes.
Starting to pilot. And so there's a support, the data comes in and helps to inform the household, but there's also support for that as well, correct, on how to use the data?
So continuous energy, basically, support system has been built around Bridgewise, because there is a component attached to this EMS or Bridgewise program that is energy literacy. So they need to, people need to understand before considering any change in their homes. They need to understand indoor equality, energy use, things like that. And the platform basically helps them optimize their energy use and indoor equality primarily from user perspective. And from, to help them basically And from, uh, to help them basically, uh, with the energy literacy, we have, uh, built, uh, uh, basically, many articles within the portal, so they can go over there, understand about like different topics and things, uh, before taking any actions. And there's a chatbot that we are building, then there is, uh, daily tips ribbon within the portal that provides them basic recommendations. And then, there is a component of analytical notifications that basically processes the information and provides them contextualized information, so that they can easily process. And it also provides them with recommendations that they can use to come out of that particular situation, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
If I, if I can add just one small comment.
Of course.
So, the other thing is that our energized navigator's door is always open for people to ask any questions they have. So, if they would like support in understanding the platform, if it's I T related, we'll connect them to I T resources. If it's energy related, we will do what we can to connect them to energy resources, or even talk to somebody about their energy, home energy use.
Great. Thank you. Councilor.
Um, what's the, what's your deployment target for Bridgewater?
For a scale-up? So, depending on the outcome of this exercise, uh, by, basically, July, we want to install at least forty more sensors in homes. And, uh, if this program can, continues based, based on the, uh, the, uh, reach out we will do and the options we will have, then we will do more installations. Otherwise, we will stop there. Yeah. Because it would not make a lot of sense to install these, uh, these sensors and, uh, basically, decommitment after maybe a few, couple of months, yeah.
Um, is there a, um, is there like a number that you want it to have the appropriate amount of data you would need for, say, commercialization or, or a proposal or something like? Like, what is, what is the number of houses or homes you would like to get to, to have sufficient data for whatever the future might be?
So, number would not be that important. So, the information, uh, we will collect will be more important. So, we can make a strong case even with, uh, few homes, like five or ten, that it, it would be helpful. And the important thing would be analyzing the data that we, we are collecting, uh, collecting and doing some benchmarking analysis that, to showcase that it, uh, clearly makes a difference, things like that. And, uh, in terms of installation, it would be more useful if we can showcase that this can be scaled up in the other communities. So, basically, trying, uh, generate that sort of information from our program, that it is viable enough to scale up, uh, in larger communities or deployment in smaller communities with, uh, slightly different infrastructure, yeah.
Any others? Okay. So, um, just to kind of recap, so we, we all know, because it's, it's easy to get lost in all the information. So, we are looking for direction on whether there are components of the, the, the program that we want to continue to explore, um, up until September, at which point we have to make a decision to, how, and how we want to move forward, whether it's continuing with the program in some form, or wrapping it up, so that we, so that staff have enough time to, to do their final wrap-up before the, the March twenty twenty-six date. And so, if there are no, no, Councilor Conklin?
Sorry, that was premature. If you're looking for a motion.
Oh, yeah. No, go ahead. I'm looking for a motion.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater direct staff to explore a subset of available options to enable program continuation past March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six for the following services. Home upgrade service delivery through regionalization or recapitalization. Bridgewater service delivery and continued development through partnership, regionalization or recapitalization. And provide council with the budget and other details by September twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Seconder? Councilor Newell? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much for turning some very complicated information into something that we could digest. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And ten point two. So, we're at second reading of chapter one ninety-seven, the Vending Bylaw Amendments to Include Water-Related Recreation Uses.
It's amazing the power of an off button. Yeah.
Which of us have not done that?
I think Pat, I think Pat needs to pay a credit. Good evening, council. Thank you for having me here this evening. So, I'll just be reviewing second reading of the amendments to the Vending Bylaw. Firstly, the recommendation is that council give second and final reading to the amendments of chapter one ninety-seven, Vending Bylaw. As you saw during the first reading, uh, we had a delegation from Michelle Casper, um, who, who, uh, went over her plans to create a kayak and paddleboard rental, in addition to a boat tour operation within the town this summer. In reviewing the request, staff realized that the Vending Bylaw would need to be amended to allow such a use. As such, these amendments came forward. Staff comprehensively looked at the bylaw to determine what sections would be needed to be amended, uh, to allow such a use. Elements of the bylaw, uh, to be considered were as follows. The permitted uses, the location, the insurance requirements, indemnification clauses, and ultimately, the use requirements for a water-related recreation use. Firstly, to permit a water-related recreation use, uh, the following sections would need to be amended. The definitions, the permitted uses, and the regulations. Firstly, the bylaw was, uh, is to be amended to include a definition for water-related recreation use, which was taken from the existing town property bylaw, where the use is already referenced. Following the addition of a definition, the use would need to be added under section four, permitted uses. And finally, to ensure the bylaw's regulations are applied to all water-related recreation uses, section five would need to be amended to include the words water-related recreation uses. Uh, equipment, actually, is, is the wording for section five. Next, the location of the uses were examined. First, staff looked at the wa, uh, open spaces that are abutting the Le Havre River, uh, King Street Court, Pugin Whisker Park, and Shipyard's Landing. As part of the evaluation, staff consulted with planning, economic development, and event staff to analyze the parks and determine the appropriateness of the use in each of the three spaces. Ultimately, it was determined by staff that King Street Court was difficult to access with vendor equipment due to the stairs and switchback ramps. And further, that the, the park features a high level of design, which may be difficult to cite a vending operation within. While the space may be a great destination for paddlers, it was, uh, felt that the, uh, the limited dock frontage, as well as the shallow water in the area, would limit water-related recreation uses. However, it would still be open for other vending opportunities. Next, Pugin Whisker Park, more easily accessible for vendors and visible to the public, seemed much more suitable for vending opportunities. Though there was some concern from staff initially that summer, uh, programming and public use may conflict with the use, uh, with oversight from the development officer with regard to placement, staff believed the addition of the use may, uh, will enhance the activation of the park and the downtown vibrancy. Finally, Shipyard's Landing has long acted as the primary location for vending operations in the town. The park's high level of accessibility, featured with the long, uh, largest dock in town, a hundred and eighty-five feet, with a total of twenty-four cleats, make it a clear location for operating water-related recreation uses. Next, um, the, uh, location would need to be added under the, uh, section six to allow water-related recreation uses within those two specified parks. Next, the insurance and indemnification clauses. To date, staff have had a practice, but there's been no regulation within the Vending Bylaw to require proof of insurance. As such, staff is recommending to include a section for insurance requirements, which will be in line with town policy, and at the recommendation of the town insurer, based on the nature of the activity being proposed. In conjunction with the insurance requirements, uh, staff have added, uh, indemnification clauses, uh, stating that the town would not be responsible for the loss of damage, loss or damage of property or injury from vending operations. Finally, the use requirements. As water-related vending differs significantly from other vending operations, additional requirements were needed, including, uh, as previously stated, the location of the operation, maximum cleats used, and minimum obstruct, obstructed dock width. Further, because the Vending Bylaw regulates signage tied to the vendor type, the permission for signage would need to be amended to include opportunities for water-related recreation uses. The permission outlines, uh, signage within proximity of the, the operation and within, uh, the park. Finally, compliance to the federal requirements per the Small Vessel Regulations would be required. Ultimately, is, uh, staff's recommendation that council give second and final reading to the amendments to chapter one ninety-seven, the Vending Bylaw. Any questions?
No questions? Second reading, so I think we asked all our questions. So, if I could, oh, sorry.
Nope. I'm, I'm like.
Oh.
Counterpart here. A little premature there.
You're just determined to trip me up a little bit, right? Yeah, yeah.
Keeping your nose.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to move that the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater hereby conducts second and final reading of bylaw number two-two-five, a bylaw to amend chapter one nine-seven, Vending Bylaw, to allow for the operation of water-related recreational uses, as shown in appendix A of document number twenty-five dash zero four-five B, dated May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Could I have a seconder? Councilor Newell? All those in favor? None opposed? The, the motion is carried.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. And we're on to ten point three, second reading again of chapter one eighty-four, Tax Exemptions for Nonprofit Organizations. This is to approve the applications for twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Any questions? Any discussion?
I do have one question. Um, why is the, why does the Field House qualify for a full tax exemption, where like the Curling Club just gets a partial one? Just curious what the difference is in, from?
Yeah. So, the, um, the full, the bylaw has the criteria for full tax exemption, and it's basically, um, uh, those occupants who deliver a service otherwise offered by the municipality, so recreation, or a service not likely to be offered directly by, by the town, but is supported by the town and is a priority community need. So, in this case, council decided that it was, um, a service that they would otherwise provide, uh, be in a recreation facility. And it is also reflected in the lease agreement that council has signed with, with the Field House Society, that they would receive, um, full tax exemption per the bylaw, provided they continue to meet the, the criteria, which they have.
So, it was a decision of council?
Yeah. And, and it, and it does meet that, that, that criteria. A partial would have been, um, it, we, converting it from commercial to residential, um, for an organization that'd be delivering social, recreational, heritage services, not likely to be offered directly by the town, but is supported by the town. So, it, it could be looked at similarly as if you had a, um, recreation facility that was owned by a nonprofit, operated by a nonprofit. Council could consider that to qualify for full exemption, because it's a recreation service that the, the town likely would have been providing otherwise. And that, that obviously was how the Field House was looked at.
Any other questions, councilor?
So, just on, um, Councilor Newell's question there. So, is it possible, like, for down the road, for council to maybe look at adding the Curling Club in the same bracket as the Field House Society?
You could. Um, the Curling Club does have space, um, that is rented. Uh, and there is a little bit of a different relationship between the Field House and the town, since the town does own the land, and the Field House owns the building on the land. So, it was part of the lease agreement that was negotiated between the town and the Field House. So, uh, council can always look at that again when the lease expires, and the lease is up in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay. One other question. Is there a tax exemption, property tax exemption associated with the L C L C?
Uh, no. Well, I mean, each municipal unit, it's not on our list here, so.
So, it's full.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any others?
Thank you.
Okay. There are no others. Could I have a motion to approve the? Councilor Fager?
Okay. Thank you. Um, I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater conduct second and final reading of chapter two-two-nine, a bylaw to amend chapter one eighty-four, Tax Exemption for Nonprofit Organizations Bylaw, to approve the following tax exemptions for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year. Number one, one fifty Churchill Street, Bridgewater and Area Interchurch Food Bank Association, full tax exemption. The second, uh, five forty-three Glen Allen Drive, So Short Field House Society, full tax exemption. Number three, six fifty-five King Street, The Ark, Lunenburg County Association for the Specialty Challenge, partially tax exemption. And number four, ninety Dominion Street, Curling Club, Bridgewater, partial tax exemption.
And a seconder? Councilor Newell, thank you.
I'm just seconding everything.
Yeah. Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. And down to new business, eleven point one, uh, the summer council meetings and looking at some potential changes?
Um, well, the, the, the report has the recommendation as, has been done historically with council, that during the summer months, um, council, uh, has had one discussion session, one council meeting. Our normal schedule is at least a minimum of one discussion session and two council meetings, but we often end up having two discussion sessions and two. For the months of July and August, um, it has been historically the practice of council to reduce it to one discussion session, one council meeting, and that enables council and the staff to plan some summer vacation time, um, around those. So, normally, it's the first Monday for discussion session and the second Monday for council meeting. So, that's the recommendation as, has been, um, historically done, those first two Mondays of each month. I would note that the discussion session in August does fall on a Tuesday, which is when you have a holiday Monday. Typically, it's the next Tuesday. Council, again, up to council whether or not you want to give some consideration to that being a, a long, at the tail end of a long weekend, where, um, that may be a chosen week for vacations. Could move that discussion session to the, the eighteenth, um, if council so desired, or you can just keep it at your normal, which is the first two Mondays of the month, one for discussion, one for council.
And it falls the same way, both in July and August, the first weekends are, are long weekends in both? Councilor Newell?
I mean, is there a lot of harm moving the August sessions to, like, the last two weeks of August instead? Or does it give the larger break for people if they want to take it?
Um, I think that would be up to council. It's council's meeting schedule and whether or not council, uh, counselors have made plans around that schedule? I'm just looking at my calendar.
I mean, I like the idea of moving it just to, since it's a long weekend anyway, but, uh, I, I mean, I'm just, I would be in favor of just moving the, um, August meetings to maybe just later in the month, like, the second and third, or the third and fourth Monday or something in the month, and then you have like a nice four-week block in between, but, you know? I don't have any plans.
Well, I certainly am not planning on taking a four-week vacation this summer, so I'm fine with the dates as presented.
Yeah. I'm just going to comment that there may be some time-sensitive items that may come up in council, so I just, I know we're like reduced fifty percent in the meeting time, so I would be in favor of keeping the schedule as presented.
Okay. Great. Any other comments? All right. So, if I could have a motion, please?
Okay. I will make a motion. Uh, I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater set the twenty twenty-five summer meeting schedule as follows. July, uh, the discussion session for Monday, July seventh, twenty twenty-five, uh, the council meeting for Monday, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. August, uh, the discussion session for Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty-five, and the council meeting for Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-five.
Perfect. Thank you. Seconder? Perfect. Thank you. Seconder? Counselor, why not? We're creatures of habit, aren't we? All those in favor? None opposed? The motion is carried. And we are down to Designated Communities Project Funds. And I know Mayor Mitchell always makes sure that everyone is aware that these are some means of collecting donations for organizations in town that set this, set themselves up with us. So the money comes in, donations come into the town, we're able to provide tax receipts, and then the organization can request those donations be released to them basically through a motion of council. So it is not a grant from the Town of Bridgewater to these organizations, it is donations being sent back to them. So the first one is the Firefighters Association of Bridgewater. Any conversation? Any questions? Cam? Oh, sorry.
Just a question. Would this be like just an automatic annual request, or is it as needed?
It's as the funds come in. So they may let it grow to a certain amount and then request the funds. And sometimes they have specific projects that they wish to use the funds for.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, can I have a motion to, for the Firefighters Association? Counselor Fugier?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, in accordance with Policy 97, Designated Community Project Fund Policy, approve the issuance of a grant in the amount of $3,430 to the Firefighters Association of Bridgewater in support of fire services within the Town of Bridgewater.
Thank you. And a seconder? Counselor Conklin? I was waiting for you guys to pull your weight on this side of the table. All those in favor? None opposed? Some motion is carried. And then we have a second one for the Bridgewater Curling Club. If I could have a motion for that one. Oh, sorry, any questions on that one before we? Oh, okay, then no motion. Councilor Conklin?
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater, in accordance with Policy 97, Designated Community Project Fund Policy, approve the issuance of a grant in the amount of $3,000 to the Bridgewater Curling Club towards three projects, as indicated in their application of May 2024.
Thank you. A seconder? Counselor Newell? All those in favor? None opposed? So the motion is carried. And we are down to 11.4, Regional Growth Management Committee, Terms of Reference.
So this came out of a strategic priority that was developed by council during our recent strategic priority sessions earlier in the calendar year. And this priority really reflects council's interest in working with the District of Lunenburg on various regional initiatives, including growth management. So it's in recognition that there's a lot of interfacing that happens on the fringe between the town and the municipality that's related to growth. And Mayor Mitchell and myself were directed by council to meet with the Mayor of Model and their C A O to initiate that conversation, to determine if there was interest at looking at collaborating on these regional issues. And there was, which council then directed that we look at creating a terms of reference that could guide a committee that would be formed to look at regional growth management. So this report has that terms of reference. The key components of the terms of reference are is that the committee's mandate is to advise, it's advisory only, and recommend to council options on collaborating. And these would be around the challenges that regional growth creates, including alignment of growth with infrastructures. That would be roads, sewer, water, transportation, public transportation, transit, active transportation, and land use planning, and how that all interfaces together, because they do influence each other. Service delivery and options for that, and issues that cross municipal boundaries, such as regional economic growth and investment, and opportunities to collaborate to increase capacity and service levels. So it can be a range of things, but it's mainly around the impact of growth and building that capacity to accommodate growth and do it strategically, in recognition that both units impact the other. The committee takes direction from the councils, and the committee would only work on those matters that the councils referred to them from both councils. So that's specifically in the terms of reference, just to make sure that they're not working on something, come back with a recommendation, and councils are taken off guard because they weren't aware that that was something that they wanted worked on. Composition of the committee would be the mayor, deputy mayor, and an alternate from each municipal unit. C A Os would be there as a resource, and staff would be used as deemed necessary because of it all aligned with council direction. Meetings would be open to the public, so the public could come and listen, except for in camera. So we'd follow the MGA for what can go in camera for. Seven days' notice of a meeting, and there would be meeting notes and consensuses, as opposed to minutes and motions. So it would be that if the consensus wasn't reached, it wouldn't go to the councils as a recommendation from that committee. So that's, those are the main terms of the committee. The terms of reference are attached to the report. And basically, what I gave was a summary of what their mandate would be, and where their authority would come from, and who would be on the committee.
Thank you. Any questions around the terms of reference or the committee itself? I think it's great when we can work with our neighbors and make sure that we're all on the same page. So a motion to approve or accept the terms of reference for the Growth Management Committee. Counselor Fugier? Sorry. Newell.
I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the terms of reference for the Regional Growth Management Committee as presented in Document 25-080 dated April 30, 2025.
Thank you. Seconder? Counselor, why not? Got it?
There was a lot of enthusiasm.
Nailed it.
Well, it's coming back over to this side.
All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And Engineering Services. So 20, sorry, item 11.5, the RFP 2024-06, Engineering Services for King Street Wastewater System Upgrade.
Thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. So engineering, myself, is here tonight to recommend to council to approve the award of RFP 2024-06, Engineering Services for King Street Wastewater System Upgrade. Those upgrades include the renewal of Pump Station 4 and its force main, Pump Station 6, its upgrade, design and construction, and the construction of a gravity store main between 4 and 11. Sorry. So these projects support the town fulfilling its regulatory requirements, its operational needs, as well as factoring in future growth. Combining all three projects together, currently as the council approved the capital budget, there's three separate projects, projects, sorry. I should have water before I came up. So we thought it best to combine all three together because they are in King Street. It makes logistical sense from, to provide continuity in engineering. Being efficient with budget dollars mitigates the risk of delays with the design, as well as construction. The work involved is expected to take place over multiple years. So, subject to council's award tonight, it'll start in June 2025, and these projects will carry forward all the way through to March 2029. Excuse me. So we did issue the RFP at the end of last fiscal year, just at the very end. It closed in March. We received two submissions, and they were evaluated, as they always are, by the engineering team, team in the engineering department. The highest rate of proposal belongs to Design Point Engineering, with a score of approximately 90. The exact score is in the memo. And the value of all three projects for design, including the contracted MIM for construction, depending on the project, is approximately $1.22 million. Over the life of the project, from a budget perspective, we do have $1.75 million approximately in this year's budget for these projects, for design fees. So it's more than sufficient to cover the three projects in the initial year. These projects are funded through the now-secured Disaster Mitigation and Adaptation Fund, or D M A for short, and that funding gives us approximately 70% or 73% in funding. Offsets are dollar, and the town pays the remainder. So of the options listed, certainly that engineering respectfully recommends the council approve the award of RFP 2024-06, Engineering Services, King Street Wastewater System Upgrades to Design Point Engineering and Surveying Limited, for a cost of $1,337,351.10, including H S T, or $1,218,362.05, net H S T. Those are hard numbers to say very quickly.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions? Counselor Conklin, looks like he's thinking. Counselor, why not?
When we, not so much on an RFP, but when we budget or quote on projects, do we build in any kind of a buffer, just because, you know, there's going to be things that'll come up?
So typically, when we start our budgeting process, staff have used their knowledge and experience on construction. So we say, well, if that project is a million dollars, usually we allow 10% contingency on that for scope changes. But we also use that to come up with our estimate for engineering and design, which can fluctuate between 10 and 25%, depending on flexibility. So if it's a pump station project versus a linear road replacement of infrastructure. So, yes, we do.
So it can vary anywhere from 10 to 25, depending on?
The engineering fees can range from 10 to 25, and usually for contingency for construction, scope changes or things like that, we're usually around 10 to 15% that we budget. And so with the D M A projects, we started off with a 30% contingency.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Due to some of the, it's a 10-year project, and some of those projects haven't been fully scoped, maybe until year six. So there's contingency built in.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Note that it came in under budget, which doesn't always happen for you, so we're going to make a big deal of it tonight. All right, if there's no other questions, a motion to approve?
Do you want to take this?
Counselor Newell?
Okay, all right. I'll do it. Or would this side of the room like to? I move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the award of RFP 2024-06, Engineering Services, oh, yep, King Street Wastewater Systems Upgrade to Design Point Engineering and Surveying Limited at $1,337,351.10, including H S T, or $1,218,362.05, net H S T.
Thank you. A seconder? Counselor Conklin? All those in favor? None opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our agenda, and we need a motion to adjourn.
No.
Counselor Fugier. And a seconder? Counselor Newell, thank you. All in favor? Do I, do we vote on that?
No.
No. Okay, we're done. Thank you for putting up with me tonight.